Do you want to turn it off, maybe so it's not behind us?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call the regular City Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 18, 2025 to order and ask all of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Steinhardt.
Present.
Commissioner Elder.
Present.
Commissioner Olssman.
Present.
Commissioner Rozell.
Present.
Mayor Paul present. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Communications, I don't believe there were any communications this evening, and I do not see any elected officials in the room, so we're going to move on to public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on an item that is not on the agenda. Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Steve Gold, 36 resident of the Woods, currently living at 26764 York Road. Yesterday, a man who happened to be a person of color was stopped by Huntington Woods Police on 11 Mile Road near Coolidge for a traffic violation. He didn't have a driver's license, and the officer put his name into the lean, which is the state's law enforcement information network database. The officer saw in the lean that the man had an outstanding felony warrant and notified CBP, Customs and Border Protection. CBP is a sister agency to ICE and works closely with ICE and Department of Homeland Security. CBP arrived within an hour and they took the man into custody. The lean has always contained information about garden variety felonies like grand theft or aggravated assault, but it was the Trump administration that for the first time ever put warrants for violations of federal immigration laws into the lean, laws which are not within the enforcement purview of local authorities like the Huntington Woods Police. To determine which sort of felony was involved, a normal criminal violation or a violation of federal immigration law, the police officer must click deeper into the lean database. If the felony warrant for yesterday's motorist was for a criminal violation, the officer would no doubt have immediately arrested him and taken him into custody, but that's not what happened. CBP was called. That indicates that the officer did go further into the lean and saw that the warrant was for an immigration violation. Even then, it's important to note that an ICE administrative warrant is not equivalent to a criminal arrest warrant. Cities and counties can voluntarily enter into agreements with ICE called 287G agreements. These give certain county or city officials some of the responsibilities and powers of federal ICE officers. Currently, there are well over 1,000 287G agreements in place around the country, some of them in Michigan. It's the most by far, but Huntington Woods does not have one, and I hope that we never do. So, there is no written statutory or contractual requirement for Huntington Woods Police to participate in the enforcement of federal immigration law. It would appear, and I'll say again, appear, that Huntington Woods resources have been used not to enforce local ordinances or state laws or any other purpose falling into their mission, but to voluntarily assist the Trump administration in its agenda of taking people off the streets for mass deportation. The Department of Public Safety says that its mission is to provide exemplary public safety services to our residents, and they do, and to our businesses and to all those who work in, visit, or travel through our community. They acknowledge that their effectiveness depends upon the acceptance of their authority and the approval of their actions by the community. I don't think that this community would approve of this recent action, which has taken place without public discussion, much less approval. Politics completely aside, communities which voluntarily assume the duties of federal ICE employees incur enormous potential liability for violation of state and federal, including constitutional, law. This has all been very well laid out in a document written by the ACLU of Michigan and sent to the, and also the Michigan Immigrant Resource Center, and sent to all police chiefs and sheriffs in Michigan titled Updated Guidance for Law Enforcement on Immigration Enforcement Practices. I have copies for all seven of you, and I thank you for listening to these concerns.
Well, not all, the statement he made is totally factual. The officer stopped the, it was a female driver, not a male driver. She was traveling on 11 Mile Road westbound towards Coolidge, was stopped for 15 and 30. The car she was driving had a expired plate that was to be confiscated per the Secretary of State because the fraudulent proof of insurance that was sent to the Secretary, Secretary of State was fraudulent. They wanted the plate confiscated for that reason. There was no insurance on that vehicle. So, she was stopped for that violation. He attempted to identify the driver from the documents that she provided. Did not have a driver's license, was not licensed driver, never had a driver's license. The officer could have arrested her for not having a driver's license. We did impound the car because there was no insurance on it and the plate had to be confiscated and wasn't licensed to be on the roadway. Lean was not used to try to identify a federal warrant. The officer had difficulty trying to identify who they were because they had fraudulent passports and identification. The officer advised our dispatch of that, and he was requested then to contact Border Patrol to try to help identify who she actually was. We called them to find that information. Once she was identified, there was a federal judge who had a retainer on this person for a warrant for her. He was also aware that there was a male in the car who voluntarily gave his ID and his information, also had fraudulent ID, two sets of ID on him. So when the ICE asked us to detain them for the hold from the judge, they responded and they were able to identify the pastor also, also having a felony or federal warrants for his arrest. At that time, the officer released both the male and the female to the Border Patrol without incident. Everything after that happened in Oak Park.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Lori Lisi, 13110HART, and I'm also here to talk about the same incident, so I'm going to have to, I know more now than I did when I came here. First, I want to start by thanking Huntington Woods Public Safety for the things they do to keep us safe. I've called them several times since moving here 30 years ago, and every time they've been professional and helped me with whatever issue I was facing, no matter how silly or how serious. However, my gratitude and our gratitude for Huntington Woods Public Safety does not mean that citizens are not entitled to ask questions and receive answers to how and why our police handle particular situations. I'm here tonight because, like many residents, I had heard about the stop on 11 Mile, and I had heard that Huntington Woods Police had called Customs and Border Patrol to detain, but now it turns out were two people in the car. And what I didn't know before I came here is why those people were stopped, what public safety discovered after stopping them, what caused them to call CBP, and were they required by federal law to call CBP? In addition to what happened in Huntington Woods, and now it sounds like they're related, there was the incident in Oak Park in which it was claimed that there was a woman that was actually tased, and there's video footage of it, which is pretty disturbing. As you may be aware, many Americans are outraged at the activities of CBP and ICE. We're outraged at videos that show peaceful protesters being attacked by ICE, undocumented and documented immigrants and even citizens being thrown into cars and ripped from their families, people who have lived and contributed to our communities being kidnapped by masked men in unmarked cars, SWAT teams landing on apartment buildings in the middle of the night and zip tying young children, people deported to foreign concentration camps without due process. Our level of concern for the validity of CBP and ICE actions and their respect for the rule of law and due process is through the roof, and consequently, we have great concern for how our public safety department interacts with these agencies. I'm here tonight to ask that Huntington Woods Public Service give us a clear explanation of what happened yesterday on 11 Mile, and I think you've done that. Why did they feel they needed to call CBP? What is the policy of the Huntington Woods Public Safety Department with respect to asking immigration status of people they meet while policing? What are their policies for when they must call CBP? And what is the law upon which these policies are based? I tried to do some research myself today, and it seems like there are some areas in which it's kind of hard to extrapolate exactly what police are required to do, but as a citizen, I would like to know how Huntington Woods Public Safety is coming up with those policies and what they are. Without good communication with the citizenry, we do not know the answers to many of these questions and other questions that allow us to trust and feel safe around our public safety officers. In addition to learning more about what happened yesterday and my answers to questions about the policy vis-à-vis ICE and CBP, I would urge public safety to begin communicating more with residents, possibly by having regular meetings or coffee hours with residents. And if this is currently happening, I don't know about it, so if that's, if it is, we need better communication about that. Transparency and communication are necessary to having trust. I know for a fact that Southfield Police have regular coffee hours with residents, and I know they're a much bigger community, but no matter how big your community is, I think it's important that your residents have the ability to talk with public safety officers. And Southfield even has a program that allows residents to sign up for several sessions to learn more about the policies and the methods of their police department. I think they even do ride-alongs. And I know that Oak Park Police posted an explanation of what happened in Oak Park yesterday on their Facebook page. I would ask, again, that our police departments start similar programs. We should have opportunities to ask questions and learn more about our police on a regular basis. I think many residents do not feel comfortable contacting the police individually with those kinds of questions. I thank you for listening to my concerns tonight, and I look forward to learning more about Huntington Woods Public Safety plans to safeguard the community and those people who pass through and work in our city. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing non-public participation is closed, and we'll move on to our regular items of business. Our first item is a matter of accepting the 2024, '25 financial statements as presented by our city auditors. I'll turn that over to Dan.
Thank you. My name is Dan Porter. I'm a senior editor with Mayor Chris Harrison. We've done the audit for the city of Huntington Woods for the past few years now, and I wanted you to attend tonight and present the results of the audit to you, where we consider to be some of the key highlights and answer any questions you guys might have. If I can't answer them tonight, I'll get back with you with the, or answer that, I had to translate my work papers. So with that, we'll go into the financial statements. I passed out a little paper packet of the slides I planned to go over tonight, so you can follow along with the little presentation packet that I passed out before the meeting. So, the one piece of the financial statements we consider to be ours is the independent auditors report. The rest of the financial statements are yours. We've taken the numbers, we've tested your balances, we've put together as the financial statements, but the financial statements are yours. We've just given our opinion on them. So, we'll start off here with the first slide, pages 14 through 16 in the financial statements. Want to remind you guys that the purpose or the objective of the audit is for us to express our opinions on your financial statements. The purpose of the audit is not necessarily designed or intended to detect fraud, and certainly if we made aware of anything during the audit that we were concerned with, we would share that with you now. Fraud detection, deterrence, and prevention, as well as sound internal controls, are all management responsibilities. So, the City Commission Management. Again, this is found on pages 14 through 16 of the financial statements. Then we'll go through a few of the components of that letter here in the next few slides here. So, the first one is the opinion itself. So, we've issued what's called a unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can offer, basically meaning that there's no modifications, there's no exceptions to GAAP financial statements. Financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, according to GAAP. To put it to perspective, there are four different opinions that are available to us. There's the unmodified opinion and the clean, clean opinion. There's also a qualified opinion. If you were omitting a certain requirement of GAAP, such as capital assets, long-term debt leases, or something of that nature, we might say, except for the effect of capital assets or except for the effect of leases, the financial statements are fairly presented. There's an adverse opinion, which is simply saying the financial statements are not fairly presented. And then the last available opinion to us would be a disclaimer of opinion, which is basically, we couldn't complete the audit and we issued no opinion. So, obviously, the unmodified opinion is what you as a board look for, what the state looks for. Qualified opinion is okay in certain circumstances, but adverse and the disclaimer opinion, you don't necessarily want to see. With that, we'll go to the next slide here, Responsibilities of Management for the Financial Statements. This is the fourth paragraph on page 14. Management is responsible for the preparation and representation of financial statements, which includes the design, implementation, and the maintenance of internal controls over the financial statements. And the last slide on this letter would be the first paragraph on page five, lays out the auditors' responsibilities for the financial statements, and our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance, so not absolute assurance. We can't test everything. We test the significant, the material balances, and issue a reasonable assurance to the financial numbers are free from material misstatement. Next, we'll go into the financial statements themselves. There are two sets of financial statements in the audit. There's the government-wide financial statements, pages 28 through 29. It's the state of net position and also the state of activities. State of Net Position is kind of a snapshot of your financial condition, close of business on June 30th, kind of a long-term focus. It's going to include capital assets, it's going to include capital or long-term debt, any kind of leases, compensated absences, things like that. And then the state of activities would be the results of the year's operations, also more of a long-term focus. It's going to include depreciation, but not include payments on your long-term debt. Couple of little highlights from the government-wide statements here. Governmental activities, strong liquidity, you have a current ratio being your current assets over your current liabilities, about 2.5 times, so 2.5 times more current assets than you have current liabilities, so you're going to figure bills when they come due. Liquid, really anything over one is a good number. Two is probably a better benchmark as far as having some cushion. So, 2.5 is definitely a liquid ratio. Unrestricted net position is a negative number. That's mainly just, well, not mainly, it's just because it does include long-term debt. It includes your net pension liability, your net OPEB liability. If those weren't there, or simply looking at current resources, it would be a positive number. Your pension is currently about 70% funded. Your OPEB liability is currently about 76% funded, and you've got long-term debt in total of about $28 million for governmental activities. Bottom line here is you added $823,000 to your total net position for the year. Business-type activities, which we'll talk about in a little bit more detail in the next slide, a little bit farther back, but governmental, or business-type activities being your water, sewer fund, you added about $320,000 to your total net position for the year. And again, we'll talk about a little bit more in detail on the fund in a few slides back. Next slide looks at the governmental fund financial statements. This will be getting on page 30, so pages 30 and 32. The page 30 is a balance sheet, again, a snapshot of your financial condition, close of business on June 30th, more of a short-term focus, probably more your presentation that you see in the monthly board meetings. And then the page 32 will be the state of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance, so that would be the results of operations for the fiscal year. We can look at it on a short-term focus. When you purchase capital assets, they get expensed as capital outlay. It is not taken into account depreciation on those assets. When you make payments on your long-term debt, those will show up as expenses, as debt service, as opposed to reducing liability like on the government-wide statements. Next slide lays out a few of the numbers here, and they're going to focus mainly on the general fund as the operating fund for the city. The other funds, special revenue funds, are all limited as to their purpose, so we'll focus on the general fund here. There are five different categories of fund balance. There are non-spendable fund balance, things you've already spent, prepaid, inventory, things like that. There's restricted fund balance, things that are restricted from outside sources, grant sources, taxes, things like that. Committed fund balance would be things that the board passes a resolution and commits those things at a higher level. Assigned fund balance would be more of a management earmarking of fund balance, kind of a intended purpose of the use of fund balance. Then there's unassigned fund balance, which is basically everything that's left over, the spendable pieces. With that, we'd like to look at the assigned and the unassigned portions of fund balance, being the unrestricted, if you will, pieces of fund balance, and we'd like to look at how that compares to your annual expenditures. Currently, you guys are at about 14% of your annual expenditures in spendable or the unrestricted piece of fund balance. The GFOA does like to recommend about 17%, so about two months of cash flow or two months of fund balance. And you guys are at 14%, so a little bit shy of that mark, but still a nice healthy fund balance. It's about 2%, or not 2%, but two months of fund balance. Next page lays out a few of the key numbers from the state of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance for the general fund. Again, total revenues, $10,48,916. That's about $654,000, or about 7% higher than 2024. Expenditures, $6,598,123. That's also $414,000 higher than last year, so also about 7% higher than 2024. Transfers out increased to about $864,000, and your transfers out for the current year were about $3.9 million. And overall, your change in your fund balance was a use of fund balance this year of about $488,000. Last year, you had added about $834,000 to your fund balance. The next page is a five-year presentation, bar chart showing the past five years of your total revenues. In the blue bars, total expenditures, rather, as the, I think, the orange bars. Then the total, or the total fund balance is the yellowish bars there. As you can see, in 2021, 2023, and 2024, the blue exceeded the orange bars there, so you added to your fund balance. Then you had a slight use of fund balance in 2022 and 2025. So you've added your fund balance in three of the past five years. Again, to get some financial condition. Next page is going to be a pie chart representing the composition of your general fund revenues. Largest revenue source for the general fund is property taxes, at about 79% of your annual revenues. That's, I believe, I got it close to the same number, the same category revenue source last year at 79% as well. Intergovernmental revenues this year, being state shared revenue, any kind of state federal grants, that was about 8% of your annual revenues this year, compared to about 9% last year. So, as a percentages of the annual activity, pretty consistent with the year before. Next page, we have the expenditures, same thing, composition of your general fund expenditures for the year. Largest expenditure category being transfers out to other funds at about 37%. That compares to about 33% last year. Next largest expenditure category would be public safety at about 31%, which compares to about 34% the year before. And then general government comes in at about 18%, which compares to 19% the year before. So, relatively consistent with the year before, same, same category sizes. Next page is a graph that shows the general funds, unassigned fund balance, as a percentage of your annual expenditures and other financing uses. That includes your operating expenses and the transfers out. Highest point being back in 2021 at about 28% and decreasing down to your current level, which is about 14% in 2025. level, which is about 14% in 2025. Again, the GFOA likes to recommend a minimum of 17%, and you'll see that on the next page here, where we show a similar graph in terms of dollars, with the orange line there representing the, what the GFOA would recommend as being the minimum, the 17% fund balance, and then the blue line represents your actual fund balance. So, definitely exceeded that benchmark in the past four years, and then in 2025, that's a bit down a little bit below what the GFOA would recommend as a minimum. Next page, we look at the water and sewer fund, the proprietary fund statements. This can be on pages 34, 35, and 36 of the financial statements. Similar information as the government-wide statements, but a little bit more detailed So, looking at your total net position for the water and sewer fund, you're at about $8.8 million. That is broken into two different categories. There's the net investment in capital assets, things that you've already spent in capital assets. You can't really spend those assets, you just use them in the future to provide services. And then there's the unrestricted piece of net position. As a measure of your financial health, we like to divide the unrestricted net position by your expenses, less depreciation, so kind of the actual cash outflows. The depreciation is not a cash outflow, it's just a use of the resources. So, you're currently sitting at about 49%, about six months of operations in unrestricted net position. This is not factored in debt service, so any principal payments on debt does not show up as an expense. And it also doesn't factor in capital needs, so future system improvements, future capital Next page is going to show, again, a five-year trend, looking at total revenues, total expenses, and then your total net position for the water and sewer fund. And as you can see, the blue has exceeded the orange bars in the past five years, so you've added to your net position in each of the past five years. The next graph is going to be the composition of your water and sewer fund net position. The orange bars representing the investment in capital assets, so again, things that you can't really spend, you're just going to use those resources in the future to provide water and sewer services. The blue pieces of the bars there represent the actual spendable net position. And the last graph here is going to be looking at the unrestricted net position as a percentage of your annual operating expenses, excluding the depreciation. So, going from a 2021, about 40 or 49%, then you're in at, out here at 2025, at about the same, 49%. Last thing I wanted to cover is on note 17, beginning on page 71, we do talk about a few upcoming financial analysis coming up in future years. Actually, they both take effect next year. One of them is GASB 103, so it's going to change the presentation of the financial statements a little bit. It's going to change up how you present the MDA, some different required presentations there. It'll change up the presentation of the budgetary comparison statements. So, instead of just comparing the original budget, the final budget, and then having a variance between the final budget and the actual balances, it's going to also add a variance between the original budget and the final budget, kind of showing how much the budget changed during the year. And it'll also include explanations for large budget amendments. So, changes in your budget from the original budget to the final budget throughout the year. And then lastly, the GASB 104 takes effect also in 2026. It's a disclosure of certain capital assets, so various capital assets such as leases, subidas, and other capital assets will be shown separately in the notes to the financial statements. So, not as big of an impact on your statements, but they will be coming up, and it'll have a different financial statement presentation. That's all I plan to go over, but if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. So, on the general funds expenditure, this chart, the 37%, the transfers out, can you repeat what that, is that like the overhead for Parks and Rec, and like, what is that?
Yeah, that's going to be transfers out to all the various funds, where basically the general fund collects all of the, or most of the operating tax levy anyways, and then also the state shared revenue. So, that's essentially transferring those resources from the general fund to the other funds that don't collect those revenues.
So, what are those funds?
I don't know specifically which ones they are. They're laid out in the MDA, there's a table that kind of shows how much was transferred from the general fund to each of the funds. But I'm assuming there's probably transfers to debt service funds to make the debt service payments, probably capital projects funds to conduct the capital improvements, possibly the local street fund.
Maybe we can take that offline and get some more information out there. Good question for Amy or Andrew. Thank you.
I believe it's like the last table in the MDA, in the actual, the full financial statements has a table of all the transfers from the general fund out to.
Yeah, we talk about it every year during budget discussions, but I think I need a refresher and just a snapshot of where we're at right now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to accept the financial statements?
So moved.
Comments or questions from the public? Any other comments from the commission?
I didn't know if anybody wanted, like, as far as the net change in fund balance. I know we did take from the fund balance this year, and so just kind of wanted everybody to know a little bit more of what that entailed. Obviously, these were items that were budgeted, but they were emergency expenditures, and so most of those revolved around HVAC enhancements that were required here, as well as at the library. And then there was pavement replacement in the DPW yard, which was about $75,000. HVAC, by the way, was $85,000. And then there was other sewer-related claims that was about $50,000. And then there was other minor necessary emergency repairs that needed to occur. So, did just want to give a little bit more context around that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need a motion to file that with the state, or is that just automatically?
No, we just have to file it by the end of the year.
Okay. All right. Item number two is a matter of consideration of approval of Amy Zerowski. Zerowski, as treasurer of the City of Huntington Woods. Welcome, actually, your first day is tomorrow, so thanks for attending on your time this evening. But do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission?
Please thank Renee for her service during that interim time period. She did a great job holding the board down in that interim time period. And welcome aboard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're going to put you to work. Next motion is appointing you as our ICCA representative for the City of Huntington Woods. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is a matter of approving city signers, Amy Zerowski and Renee Boyan for our investment account at the Multi-Bank Securities. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any comments from the public? Comments or questions for the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is a matter of considering approval of a contract for the 2026 pavement reconstruction, sewer repair, and replacement, and water main replacement project to be an extension to the FDM contract of 49156 Van Dyke in Shelby Township in the amount Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Well, I guess the only comment is they actually had, it's for Parkwood, it's for next year's road project, the only one, the one project next year, which will be Parkwood and Edwards. They actually had that in the previous contract, but being that we had to do Scotia in Newport, we took it out. So I felt that it would be important to expedite this, and being that it was already in their contract, and being that we're only going to do those two roads next year, so just allow them to complete that project. As I said, it was already in their initial agreement, we took it out.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, is this a full reconstruction, then, including? Okay. So it's not just?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. On the streets that don't have curb and gutter, when we are doing the full replacement, are we adding curb and gutter, or are we just replacing the street in its current condition?
I have to check with Kevin Ray. Okay. I think we've always added the curb and gutter.
Adding curb to the grid.
In every project, so.
Just want to make sure we're taking care of that, because I know there are still some areas that don't have that. So if we're touching it, it makes sense to get it done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is a matter of approving the agreement between the City of Huntington Woods and the City of Ferndale regarding the usage of the southwest storage area. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
This is a storage area that's used mainly, or maybe only, for leaf pickup and disposal, and leaves picked up from there, so. It's an annual contract. Any comments from the public? Comments or questions from the commission?
But it's not 150% increase like the contract from the county.
I agree.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number seven is a matter of approving the 2026 city commission meeting dates. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any comments from the public? Comments or questions from the city commission? I have one. Would it be possible to add, because we're always doing this at the last minute, the board and commission interview date to this calendar, so we don't have to do that later on? The first Tuesday in December is December 1st. That works for everybody.
It was on the first.
So, to, is that an accepted? Mayor Pro Tem, is that, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Sometimes it's hard to tell.
If you sit me on the other side of you, it'll be easier to say.
Commissioner Elder, is that an acceptable change?
Yes, that is an acceptable change.
I agree as well, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have meeting dates for next year. Okay. Item number eight is the second reading of the adoption of an ordinance to amend the city code of the City of Huntington Woods regarding the franchises agreement for the Consumers Energy Company gas franchise. Want to make any?
Nothing has changed since the first reading. It's going through the routine here.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Closed session is item number nine. This will be a matter of recessing into closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding litigation and/or settlement strategy in the Gina Kincaid versus the City of Huntington Woods case. We will need to reconvene after closed session, and this does require a roll call though.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we go into closed session regarding litigation and settlement strategy in Gina Kincaid versus City of Huntington Woods, matter number 106947, the open discussion of which would be detrimental to the litigating or financial position of the city.
Anybody want to second?
Mr. Mayor, I will second that.
Thank you. Okay. Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission? Mayor Pro Tem, Senator?
This is a roll call, so, aye?
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Commissioner Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmann?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the city manager's report.
First, I'd like to say I'd like to welcome Amy Zerowski to our city. We didn't really pick her, she picked us. There are several cities that were looking for an excellent finance director, and we were very, very fortunate that she chose to apply in Huntington Woods. She comes with a lot of experience. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's in business from MSU, and I'm looking forward to working with her and moving the city forward. So I really, thank you. Also, so, good news is our road projects are complete. Obviously, Scotia's been done, now Newport's complete. The traffic light has been on a little bit of delay because we're still waiting for the iron bars for the lights. Everything else is totally completed there. So once those bars do arrive, that traffic light will be erected, and we'll get that light signal up shortly, probably, hopefully by December. Leaf season is in full schedule, they've had no issues with that so far, and that's been going real well. Other than that, I do want to make one other comment in regards to that traffic stop, and in regards to how we work with immigration. Immigration was contacted to help us identify a suspect. We do not have anything to do with their immigration status, nor do we care, that is not our responsibility in law enforcement. However, if we have difficulty identifying a driver, we would be remiss to allow somebody to leave that could be wanted for murder or serious crime. We have to do what we can to identify that driver. And we have that reasonable suspicion to believe that they were hiding something from us with this false ID and both suspects that were in that car. That's the only reason why they were contacted, to assist in that. And another note, you know, we swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States. We also swear to abide by the federal, state, and local laws. So when a judge has a court order for us as a detainer to hold somebody, of course we're going to hold them. Now, we won't arrest them, but we detain them for that agency, federal agency, to pick them up. We do not assist them in their investigations. We do not assist them when they execute search warrants. We are solely there as peace officers, peace officers only. Our officers did an excellent job on that traffic stop. In fact, the passenger complained of sickness, the officers called an ambulance right away. They assessed him, and he did not want to go to the hospital, they left, and then they were obviously turned over to ICE. And I also am aware of the video, the 10-second video that was put out. However, if you notice, they do not have any video out of what happened prior to that female being tased. female being tased. The female unfortunately was handcuffed from the front. When the female was in the backseat, when the officer pulled over because he heard his cellphone go off and he opened the door, they forced the door open. The female took her handcuffs and wrapped it around the officer's neck, pulled him forward, wrapped her legs around the officer and yelled at her boyfriend to run. She was trying to hold the officer and around his neck with handcuffs. He feared for his own safety and that's why she was tased. None of that is in the video. She was detained and arrested, the suspect was out on foot. I do not know at this point if he was ever arrested. Both of those were, had warrants and had detainees for both of them by federal judges. And that's, and that incident actually occurred obviously in Oak Park and not in Huntington Woods. Everything, our traffic stop was uneventful, actually. And that was it.
Are there any questions from the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask one. And so that was essentially because they presented a false federal ID, a passport issued by the Department of State and Customs and Border Patrol's immigration agency that, you know, these passports pass through, that's why dispatch contacted the federal government because they produced a false federal immigration document.
That's absolutely right. And they were just called one to identify that and to assist us in identifying who we had. Once they were identified, they obviously advised us that there were federal holds by a federal judge to detain the individuals and that's why they were held.
Mr. Mayor?
Would that protocol have been the same two years ago? In other words, if they had produced ID, passport or something, same protocol?
Absolutely.
You would contact Border Patrol?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think to echo what was stated during public comment, I think the Department of Public Safety making a statement about the event because it's, there's been other statements made by other local public safety departments, it might be helpful for our residents to hear from our own Department of Public Safety about the incident and an opportunity for the city to reiterate the way in which it does or doesn't work with immigration or Border Patrol, I think would really alleviate concerns among the community members.
The reason why I did not release any statement, the incident that occurred, actually the serious incident that occurred happened in another city. It's not my position to speak for either a federal agency or Oak Park, therefore that's why that wasn't addressed. We had really no incident in our city. What happened on that traffic stop is what we do daily in our careers. I've been in law enforcement for forty years, I've done this several times where we've had people where we had to identify them or there was detainees from federal judges for several different reasons. So in my eyes in law enforcement and in regards to us, that was a normal day for us. What wasn't normal is what occurred after that, when that officer pulled over and stopped. And like I said, I can't speak for the Border Patrol, they need to speak in regards to that. And I think when you heard from Oak Park, that's what they were just trying to say, that they did not do anything. We were just there as a perimeter to help, to find the suspect who was running around in handcuffs in the neighborhood, so that's why we were there. And same thing with Oak Park, they were not involved in any of this and nor were we. It was just a normal traffic stop for us, it was nothing different.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on my comment. So the question is, so I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, the passenger had proactively given our officer his identification and that's what triggered his, you know, hooking him up, right?
Well, no, he was never actually, it was the driver. What occurred was, well, first of all, a passenger, anybody in a car, nobody has to identify themselves other than the driver.
Okay.
However, normal protocol for all police officers is going to be to ask everybody in the car for their names. If the individual says that we won't give you the name, then there's nothing else done, you can't do anything. But it's incumbent upon us as law enforcement officers to make sure that we don't have a felon in a car that we're releasing for whatever reason. However, we don't have a legal right to force them to identify themselves if they haven't committed a crime, if they're just a passenger. He voluntarily gave the officer the fake, phony ID, he did that.
That's what triggered it.
However, the only person that was being investigated was the female driver. What occurred was, once we tried to identify her, questions were asked from immigration in regards to, they knew who this person was, they knew they were actually immigration deported previously and then somehow they came back into the city, or into the United States. They asked if she, if that person was with another individual. So they were the ones to investigate that. When they showed up, they had facial recognition to help identify who he was. They did that, we had nothing to do with him. But he voluntarily gave that information, he was not investigated by us whatsoever.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Nope, he was not wrong.
And so my comment is, I think, this was really helpful to hear directly from you and I think some of our commenters also echoed that. But I agree with Commissioner Steinhardt that I think the more communications within our community with our residents and the people who, you know, live here is welcomed, it's needed. I know you and I had exchanged phone calls today and I was relaying some questions from my constituents, but, you know, whether, whatever that ends up looking like, a statement, I do think it would have been helpful to address some of the questions, just to put facts out there because I've heard different versions of the story now and there is one story, not story, but there are facts that were not in those stories that we heard out in the internet and the community today. So I would encourage public safety to do, I love, I know you used to do those coffee hours, but there was like a lack of engagement from the community.
Well, I, obviously, as you know, I do have an open door policy.
Yeah.
Obviously, anybody can come in and speak to me at any time. I don't like just responding to emails or text messages, I'd rather see people. I do have residents that come in from time to time, but at any time they can come in, I'd be happy to speak to them or if they have questions. I did have, I know you've mentioned about, I've had in the past where we called up the civilian academy for residents of Promont... The reason why we stopped that from where I was before was we didn't have, it wasn't well-attended because it's time-consuming. So it is better to have the residents or people who really are concerned about different issues or are concerned to just come in and speak to us, whether they go to public safety and speak to the shift boss, the shift lieutenant or sergeant, they'd be happy to answer any questions or to just reach out to me and speak with me a lot of times. Whether you call for coffee or not, you know, if I sat over at the rec center and did that, that'd be fine too, but I welcome anybody to come in anytime they have questions in regards to how we do things. I've explained how public safety works, a lot of people don't even realize how public safety works, that we're police, fire, and EMS. Majority of our runs aren't really police-related, they're medical-related. I think there's a lot of residents don't even realize that our police officers are firefighters and they're emergency medical technicians, they're not just police officers. So yes, I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
And I just, also, Mr. Mayor, I would like to be clear that we do not and have not entered into any agreement with the federal government to assist, you know, ICE in any way in our city and as long as I'm sitting up here, don't ever intend on voting for that. So, I mean, that doesn't exist and certainly won't on my watch, but I just think we make that clear and the folks that spoke tonight and the folks that are watching at home, if they have maybe a insomnia problem and are trying to fall asleep at night and watch our city commission meetings, can rest assured that we do not have that agreement in place.
Okay. We will reconvene in about five minutes in closed session. Thank you, everyone.